Hopefully, at some point, you'll talk, you'll give us something about kind of where we're at. I've seen emails that you were working on this, and so, please, can you update us? Because again, we thought we're coming into this meeting with some names or some people to be able to move us through this period with an amount on what it's gonna cost, which then goes into our subsequent conversation. We have need to have that conversation. We talked about with Bureau Veritas and some of the other things in reference to inspections and who's gonna eventually pay, well, not for this specific thing, but kind of next steps moving forward since we don't have an official building inspector. So, if you could give us some additional information, I think that would help alleviate kind of what we're going, what was going on.
Before we do that, there's a motion on the floor. Unreadiness, Councilman Wallace?
We continue to run into the issue of this game of politics because the reason why we even did this in the first place, made a motion December 20th to hire consultants to review and advise our documentation for the Panter Hill Apartments, each building, was because of the living condition of students. Not for any political gain, but because of what students were literally going through and telling us as they do every single meeting and send us emails. Oh, no, we were in the executive session where we heard the things that we heard, where we knew that we needed to make a decision to make sure that our citizens that elected us, that we're sworn to serve, are protected. And so, we decided to make this motion because we need to have this issue resolved going forward. So, for you to put this on the agenda, but worded the way you have to begin with is almost a slap in the face as if us as public servants don't care about the citizens that we serve, like, we don't care about the citizens. Like, we care about every entity that we have voted upon. We truly do. But the way you always stated that if we don't care, we're trying to make a political game when everything we're doing is out of pure moral decision. I think going forward, we just need to be cognizant that this, the city's not something to play with, like, people's lives and people's health and safety is not something to play with. These are real decisions that we make as a council every day. If we're gonna operate as the elected official that's gonna serve the body, then we need to work together and understand that these decisions that we make affect daily lives. And I just, I just don't like how all this was, was put out there. That's all I gotta say.
Anything else on the unreadiness? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same right? For the record, council's decision was made a few days before Christmas. After Christmas, you got New Years. In our rural environment, in checking with the cities around us, they tend to have these in-house. We haven't had the business and therefore the revenue. So, it's easy for you to say, fine, three. What I would like to do is solicit council's help since we're all equally elected. Because if, let me finish. If each of you takes one, that's four. So, I'm, I'm open to the assistance. It's on agenda because Reverend Singleton came to me last Thursday, and it was a viable issue. You wanted to know, you wanted to be included in the problem. Now, you're included. So, it's not a slap in the face, it's other than put it off. If you don't like the wording, blame it on my head, not my heart. But if I didn't give you the wording, then you complain about that. But if council will agree to help find these consultants, I'm all for it. Counsel?
Man, I've been to your office multiple times saying that I'm willing to assist.
Okay.
You have my, you have my number, you have my email. I've always made myself available to help. The only time you ever say you need assistance whenever it's city council for everybody and you say you don't have no, nobody to help you. It's because we're not, we're typically not informed of multiple things that you do. And then whenever we ask questions about it, you say, "Well, I have all these hats, I need help." But the city council is here to help.
So, you're gonna help us get a consultant? I, I, I help and I give.
That's all, I mean, we're asking.
Okay, I want to keep the same consistency. Don't wait for the city council meeting to ask for help. Whenever you can just contact us, email us, "Hey, hey, Councilman Wallace, like, can you help?" I'll be there in a hurry. I want the city to move forward. But if we keep trying to strong-arm this information and wait till the city council meet to put it out there and act victim, then it's not gonna help move the city forward.
Anyway, yes.
Mr. Mayor, you, you, you put out some information that I received, my follow-back up. You have been doing some work on this issue. The question was, was the issue about a cost? Can we, can you, can we talk through the real, the crux of the issue instead of doing what you've been doing? That's what I'm asking you.
A piece, a piece of it was that no one can be hired without council approval. People are asking how much per hour, project, whatever. Well, council has not given me any numbers to work with. So, I wasn't gonna put any out there. Even councilor and I have been in touch with that. So, you're talking about hiring someone, you haven't talked about paying anyone. So, it's, it's been up in the air, but like you said, we've been reaching out with our limited resources. But what are we working with? How much is council putting on the table? You making a budget amendment?
Point of order, point of order. We've already taken, we've already voted on this item, we got it.
Okay, since council's handling it, it's okay. Okay. Item four. Discuss and take action on the resolution of the city council of the city of Prairie View, Texas adopting a Waller County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Now, all, all this is, is FEMA, Hurricane Harvey, and other situations. This is including us in Waller County's hazard mitigation plan. They're asking us if we wanna be included. It has to do with touching on accessing some of the federal fundings and that sort of thing.
And this is gonna help us with?
This is gonna help us access funds that go to Waller County that we wouldn't qualify for as a city alone.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Rowland?
This is from Hurricane, uh, Hurricane Harvey? I mean, this is kind of the remnants.
Yes.
So, here's my, my first question is.
Look, chief?
Actually, sir, wait a minute. Our federal government 2002 had a mitigation act, the big one. And each jurisdiction must have a mitigation act. It looks like you guys signed one in 2006 with Harris County GAlP. Now, Waller has one, and now they're just sending it out, see if we wanna be a part of that. And it just helps with mitigation from disasters.
That's what I was gonna bring up. We, I thought we signed this before. I guess the second part of that is, um... Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve of the res, the, excuse me. I move that we approve the resolution of the city council of the city of Prairie View, Texas adopting Waller County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Say. It's been properly moved and seconded. The council approved the resolution adopting the Waller County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Uh, item five, city's 50th anniversary committee. The, in, in looking to appoint and get started on our city's 50th anniversary, it's, it's been come up a few times in council and was tabled. But since I'm charged with appointing folks to the committee, I spoke with several individuals throughout the community, as well as some on or off the campus, and just looking to get those individuals together to get started on planning something for the city's 50th anniversary. Councilman Jones?
I've seen this item, as you say, did it get tabled a couple times? But, um, this is a question of clarity. Was the council, like, how is this gonna be funded? As well as, uh, did the council member that proposed this idea to be on the agenda have very much input or fund this committee and how it moves forward?
Well, how it moves forward is up to the committee. Making the appointments is something that the mayor's charged with.
So, um... That, that's not how our city process works, but I, I don't wanna get into it. I think, um, our, our city process, the mayor brings names or council can submit names, and then it was, it's ratified on the committee if we create a committee, which has been on this, the agenda for us to create a committee, which again, is done by city council, not the mayor. But I think it's for a good cause and celebrating the 50th anniversary of our community. I mean, you know, my frustration of this, right, is that we're talking about this date. The day is part of it, but what we were trying to put together was something that was self, that would impact the entire year of 2019, just like other cities when they have their things. And so, um, I, I, I would've appreciated you talking to me, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, it, it's, it's okay to move forward like this. But, um, it was definitely one of those things where we're saying if we're gonna work on the same page, I, I wish you would've talked to me.
Well, my only concern was, as you said, it's been on agenda for about three months, and it was merely tabled. This is just again to get us moving, and after the committee meets, then the committee decides. As you notice, even as mayor, I'm not on the committee at all. I just want to get it started because it's an important event and all the different projects on or off the campus that the committee wishes to do. That's what we're gonna try to do. Yes?
Are we gonna, like, vote or, like, well, I guess that's the committee that we get together and come over the budget.
Yes. So, raise your hands, whatever.
So, we're approving this committee, I guess?
Yes, so we have one.
Yeah, and I'm guessing my understanding of the process, the committee meeting and that would be the recommendations of what they would like to do as we move forward. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman, Brandon?
I'm willing to approve the city 50th anniversary committee.
Say. It's been properly moved and seconded that council approves the city's 50th anniversary committee. You heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Unread.
Unreadiness, Councilman?
I just wanna make sure that, um, moving forward, that we just, uh, you know, understand our, the, our, the city's process and that we follow that. So, that's my readiness.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same right? Ayes have it. Item six, council and citizens meet police officers, Hillary Cessenda and Christine Crocker. Chief Solomon?
Hi, Christine, protocol. We'd like to introduce to us new police officers. If you could, please stand, please. They will begin their FEO training Monday the 21st. It's anywhere from maybe a 15-week training period that we sworn in next week on the 21st of the year.
You said you'd be sworn in?
On the 21st. Once they've gotten the uniforms, they help manage the uniform or anything. We just wanted him to meet city council, Mayor Mittel, uh, last week. He wanted to be in there and meet city council.
And these, as far as budget purposes, these are the two?
Budget purposes, there's one more, and these are the two.
So, we have one more slap to fill or one more?
Yes, one more budget, one more.
One more opportunity that we haven't filled in.
Yes, yes. Because we had needed.
Thank you, man.
Last question, where does that put us?
Put us, um...
Ten?
Ten? No.
Can you sit down and correspond to the time we're sworn in?
And so, we'll be at our capacity at nine officers from the city. And are we at where we needed to be? I mean, that's a loaded question, right?
Never where we needed to be.
That's a loaded question. But, but I think, I think, um, we've tried to be intentional about the resources we have.
Yes, and, and we've, we've actually come up with a plan that you guys sent through this year where what we'll do is each year, we'll put some people into full composition and hire some part-time people. So, that seems to be working pretty good. As long as you keep it afloat. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we should welcome on the...
Which one's Christine Crocker?
Okay, it's, um, you're Hillary.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Item seven, discussing considering mayor's appointing Ms. Paulette Barnett and Ms. Christina Zavala to planning zoning commission. These are two applications that came to me from planning zoning requests to the state. The added to, it's council's pleasure.
I have a question.
Sure.
We're planning a zoning. We're putting, we're gonna put two new people, but we have, we were supposed to be getting some updated stuff, and then we haven't got that all in 2018. So, where are we at with that? Um, meaning, um, so we should've had a list of how many people are currently on the committee? How many vacancies? And then kind of just, none of that is here? So, if you could help us to be able to move forward, move, move this conver, this conversation forward?
Well, there's five there. I happened to sit in on their last meeting.
There's five.
Five laws on planning zoning. Oh, Mr. Anderson? Would you, uh, give us the names of the individuals on planning zoning currently?
We don't need names. If you could just tell us a number. We just want a number. We just wanna know the number, how many y'all have and how many of y'all supposed to have. We don't need, we don't need to.
Sorry, sorry.
We have, we have five.
How many of y'all supposed to have?
Eight. Which one are your names?
So, yeah, well, I guess my, the question, and, and Mr. Anderson, if you could come up?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Or you don't have to come, well, hire if you wanna speak back there. But the question, I, I guess, we have five members now. I think the last member we appointed was Mr. Anderson, and Ms., Ms. Anderson stepped off, retired from the committee. We were supposed to be getting a planning map and all these things, a consultant, paying for a consultant, and like, where are we at with this? And we keep putting more people on there, like, where are we at? If the committee's asking us to approve these two people, where is the committee at currently with what they're doing?
I know you're just working on that, but I'll let you adjust that, Mr. Anderson.
Well, this is, that was a problem. Let's go forward with this. Right, what we're doing now, the map was almost finished, and we waiting on, we needed some data from the city, and the city wants some past amendments that has been the, you know, coordinates to the zoning ordinance. So, we finally, we, oh, I'm sorry. We finally, you know, we, we proceeded that last week, and we were about ninety, ninety percent complete with the map. So, we should have that. I talked to the contractor, and he told me we're gonna have it in two or three weeks.
And, and as I recall, for the benefit of council, the map initially was complete, and then the suggestion came to expand the map, adding more details to it than originally contracted for. Am I stating that correctly?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a part of what is extended, council?
That's what extended the time and the money. And we had some different tips and lots of things to talk about. For the full.
Uh, may I ask, um, just as Councilman Rowland said, uh, this is information that, that council would love to be updated on. So, is there a way, just like municipal court or the police department gives, like, written reports on what's going on to do, to planning and zoning, provide that for us for each council meeting, just so we can be updated?
Absolutely. It's so easy. And we can do it at the next council meeting, is that all right? And where do you wanna see it? Give us date, time, information.
You can give it to Ms. Johnson, and she could put it into our packets. That way, we can review it, so if you have any questions or anything, if one of y'all is available, we can ask you at Waller and city council meeting, or just, uh, contact you or, uh, Mr. Harrison.
Right, you're correct. And so, after the next council meeting, we're gonna have a staff report of where we are. And then, you know.
And we can meet as well. That'd be great.
And so, we'll add that planning and zoning to the agenda, Ms. Johnson? Anything else for attempts?
I know it's very short, so I'm sorry. No, no, it's fine. It's not more than that, both of you said. My question is.
My question is about the, uh, the application that you received. Those are the only two applications that we received?
Oh, no, we received eight. We had eight applications, new applications. The committee reviewed, and we, we have written letters to ask them questions. There's so much information we're missing off the applications. Of course, six of the applications, information was submitted. And we sent letters to each, each applicant. And we only, and one of the two wrote back, and the others, we haven't noted yet. These were, and so, out of the six applications, these were the two that were listed. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Adam?
I move to approve the appointments of Ms. Paulette Barnett and Ms. Christina Zavala to planning zoning commission. You heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same right? If you're in none, ayes have it. Administration, one of the main things I wanna bring the council's attention was there was a, a house on Pine Street that had not been cut for years. The foliage was as high as the roof, way past the forty-eight inches. That's required without notice per some information I got from our city attorney. So, the, uh, our public works guys and myself, we got out there, we cut it, we cleaned it. It was, I even saw pictures that the neighbors with small kids had taken of the poisonous snakes that they killed next door. The rear of the house is literally falling in, and, uh, uh, council's office is assisting us with what it takes. It's been abandoned at least seven, eight years that Mr. Glover knows of. The two cars that have been sitting in the driveway for those same amount of years were tagged, and Mr. Jackson, the owner, was notified by our police department. And I wanna thank chief and them for their work in helping move that type of stuff out literally around the city. But that was a, a hazard that needed to go. And, um, Mr. Jackson has had notices over the years, and even have been brought into court, and nothing happened. So, we abated it based on everything we saw about our power to do so.
I have a quick question on that. Did we assess a penalty, meaning, you know, the, usually if we, whether we were not gonna knock down the house or whether we're gonna cut the grass, there's a cost. Did we move forward through that process, whether you put a lien or some sort of additional fee? Where are we at with, with the process of what they?
What I did do was get an estimate from an independent contractor of eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars on what it would cost if we paid it. Of course, we would've had to have paid it. Outside of that, we cleared it based on it had been sitting for seven, eight years without. But, uh, council, whatever else we were supposed to do.
I'm not, this is, I am not comfortable with having a discussion about a specific piece of property that we're doing abatement on when that property is not listed on the agenda.
Okay, we'll add it to agenda next time, no problem. During your venture, we're... Go ahead.
One of the issues, uh, I think we were talking about as far as clarity on, um, process, like, from our last meeting on December 20th. We said we're gonna hire a building official. Can you, well, we had this, the talk, the dialogue not in the correct place. Where are we at with the business, the building official? I guess you said we needed some assistance, so for us to bring out names, I think the attorneys had sent a name or some contacts he had to them. So, this, this where we would get an update? Because again, um, it's important that not just only for moving forward the temporary COs and the C of the plant COs, we also asked, there was supposed to be a, some documents being put together about Panter Hill. And so, can you give us an update on what, those two things we asked for at the last meeting?
As you heard earlier, no one has been found in light of our location holidays and the other things that have been keeping me busy. And council, while we're on that, again, I don't know if we can because it's not on agenda. Council needs to give some thought to, as we talk to and solicit people, we have to have some idea of how much we're willing to pay them. I don't have that to work with, so it made the discussion very difficult. How much are we gonna pay this person that's not in the budget? And to have that discussion, what I'll bring up to you, I, I'd probably catch it that way. So, how are we gonna get it?
I think we're just looking as a team, man. We got to be very big there, right?
Doesn't it have, just a question? Don't, doesn't it have to be a budget amendment to include anything else?
I, I don't know. I, because it's gonna depend on, it's, I don't know what your budget policy is. I don't know of what authority you have to move money around within certain areas without having to make a budget amendment. So, I don't know the answer to that question. My guess is probably...
Let, let me help you out on that. If, if it falls within the same line item under permitting inspector, you don't need a budget amendment. It would fall within that line item. And the way you're talking now, this person would fall within, under the line item permitting.
Is that, is that the line item that Bureau Veritas filed?
Yes, right.
Is that the same one as the engineer as well?
No, engineer is separate.
The, the reason why is that the, the building official is, when a company comes in and they get, they go through the permitting process, they pay a fee. So, we're saying that the city of Prairie View is a pass-through for the company we use, which is Bureau Veritas. That means we need to look at the fee that we set and just add a fee, whether it be fifty dollars for an inspector or a hundred dollars, and it's, it's not this big budget thing. So, so, so I think we just need to step back, and, and I thought that's what we talked about December 20th.
That is definitely, that is, I'm gonna interrupt.
Okay.
That is definitely an option. There are a variety of ways for that to be handled. And I don't, I'm not trying to step on your toes, sir, so tell me if I'm way out there. But there are multiple ways for this to be addressed, through increasing your fees to help cover further costs, to any, any other number of revenue-raising ways to handle it. Fees is one of them. Having said that, I'm getting uncomfortable with that we have a departmental report that only says administration, and now we're getting into, now we're getting into specific, detailed things that are not specifically listed on the agenda, so the public doesn't have notice that it's gonna be discussed. So, my preference, if y'all would like for these to be specifically discussed in the future, let's let us know. We'll post it on there. But otherwise, these general reports should just be very general and reports without getting into a big discussion. I hate to be the bad guy, but that's consistent with the open meetings, I think.
Look, and you're correct, Councilman Wallace?
And just tell me if I'm wrong for doing this. I've been getting, uh, citizens have been telling me about issues of heavy trash around the city not being picked up. So, I wanted to ask, what is our, what's the routine that we have in terms of picking up heavy trash?
That can be a general administration question, isn't it?
They come once, they come once a month. I think it's the, the first Thursday or Monday. When they, they come, they're supposed to come routinely once a month, but you could also request a heavy trash pickup if we, we...
Do we have those specific dates?
It's on the, it's on the, uh...
It's on your water bill?
Yeah, it's, it's on this too.
It's on the, uh, yeah.
It's in that today.
'Cause I, I got some people say that some of them haven't picked up on them.
Well, there, there, there are some things that depend on what it is, they won't pick up, you know, for, you know, hazard or whatever, but it really depends. Uh, we, we give the number, it's on the water bill, it's on the newsletter for them to call, and they can actually call to schedule in case the trash company doesn't, you know, pick it up on the, as, as council happens. So, go ahead.
They have, they also have various specific guidelines, like you said, what they'll pick up, how it has to be packaged for you to pick up as well. So, but it's also on, it's also on the city website. Their, um, their content information, I believe, process is on there as well.
Okay, on the, on the city website?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow.
And so, we're... And so, we're... Just, uh, I ended up, this could be a specific thing, and I'm just gonna apologize, Mr. Charles. The Row, we had several comments, this is general administrative. So, several comments about the Rose, Marie Antoinette, and Jonah Vark. Could you, uh, is there something that you can give us at the next meeting? Or could we, we, we asked for like the street, the street maintenance or whatever, whatever, uh, plan?
Um, could you, uh, is there something that you can give us at the next meeting or could we? We, we asked for like the street, the street maintenance or whatever, whatever, uh, plan? And I know that street is probably not a full on, they kept saying concrete and I don't think that ro- that road didn't have enough traffic to do any of that? And so?
Uh, what we, what we have done is, uh, with our public works guys, we got some, I think they refer to it as washout. It's crushed concrete and we extended it. There's quite a bit of, uh, new development, uh, primarily manufactured housing that has been going down that road and, um, and it's been moving fairly steadily. Uh, so we did that, I don't know, I would say four or five months ago, and I guess what they're really saying is, you know, they want more of that or a street. And, uh, just like one person was with lights, we added, I think, two lights on that street. Like a lot of streets around the city, they want more lights. Well, you know, we spread them around, including over there. And, uh, while I respect their concerns, we're working within the budget we have and spreading these things around the entire city. But, uh, I'll, I'll be glad to take a look at it in case the water washed it out or something with some of the rain we had. But, uh, but we've been paying attention to their needs like every other area in the city. So, yes.
I guess that was it. So do we, I guess, do we need to come up with a street maintenance plan for twenty nineteen? Is that something that you have, I guess? Cause this is what we keep talking.
We've already discussed that, but we said, we said we were gonna go to the, uh, engineer to do.
Also, uh, me and Councilman Jones have been riding around the city, uh, finding some of the worst spots in terms of streets, drainage, roads that we'll be coming back to city council with, uh, so it can help with that point.
So I guess that, that, uh, lead, lead straight to my next question about, I think, on the, uh, RFPs for the city to be on the city treasurer?
The city treasurer is posted.
City treasurer is posted?
Yes.
Your engineer?
Um, mayor, if you have to. Be curious about.
Our engineer is out there already. I have to check, I think the engineer was posted along with the rest on T M L, but I have to check.
Who, please, great idea.
Uh, we may have taken one from another city or something like that because our needs would be, but you can, you know, you can check if that's something that's essential if you will.
I can tell you there's no RFP out for engineer.
Okay, you wanna help us locate one or what?
Huh?
Okay. Yes, council? The two positions that we've, we, we're not, let's, let's not forget that we had maybe two months ago, uh, an engineer standing right there who was brought on and has been assisting us. So let's not act like we don't have one, we don't have a permanent one. But you, you gentlemen are speaking like we don't have one and that nothing's been done because of what you're looking to point out. We have a city engineer. We don't have a permanent city engineer, but we have a city engineer functioning at capacity.
The question I was, the question that I think council, so, so we don't confuse the conversation. We've asked for RFP, both for the city tre-